States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks everyone for being here. Regular session of City Council for June 17th, 2019. We had one council member missing, John Sullivan, and he's absent because of work requirements. We have a motion to excuse him, so moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to excuse John from this particular council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item that we need to motion is on the agenda and the consent agenda.
So moved, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda and the consent agenda. Any discussion or questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item is a presentation, I think it probably just drove up. Presentation by Ty Ross on a land transfer airport proposal. We can come to him after department reports. I think I saw his file. Pardon? Next item is a presentation by Ty Ross. I saw you go by, so I didn't want to leave you in the dust.
So I'm really up?
Yes.
Boy, you guys aren't wasting any time here. Well, thank you. That was good notice. What I wanted to talk about was the airport a little bit and I've got a lot of information and some was not good, some was not bad. But what I'd like to do is get a meeting with the full airport board so that we can decide where we want to go because I think I've got enough numbers to tell us which direction that we probably ought to go and what we ought to do first. That's the first thing and I'd like to do that either late tonight or first thing in the morning. And so maybe I could get the board and the mayor, maybe Larry, to go to the county commissioners tomorrow because we can't get this job done, I don't believe, without some help from the county. And I'm hoping that we can get them to help us with the transportation of the rock and the material, placing of some of the material. I don't think it's going to take any out-of-pocket cash from them necessarily, but they're moving material for us.
Sure.
And I think that's the big thing. The other thing is that I'd like to see if we can accomplish is to get the SEPA done and published as quick as we can because that's going to take us 45 days after we get the newspaper for hearings and things like that. So I'm hoping that maybe we can get Pioneer or somebody close that could take total control of that and we could get on their tails to try to get it done quickly. Because Winner will be here very shortly and we need to get this accomplished before that. We're going to get any asphalt placed.
Sure.
So there's, that's my, three things that are on my agenda to do. I can go through the numbers with you if you like at this time, but I think it probably better to go through them with the board and decide what you really want to do. And I think I've got enough together for costs that give us a pretty clear idea where we're headed. Would you like me to go through any numbers with you? Yardages moved or anything like that?
I know. We've run through the numbers, so I'm not sure where we can go with this, but we have Guy on the committee. Don's not here.
My mind.
And you expressed interest in being on the committee, that's what I wanted you to do.
Yeah.
So we have two of the board.
Well, John was not still going to be on too.
Yeah, I mean, I'm flexible.
Well, we have two vacancies, so that works fine.
Oh, okay, sure.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm okay with that for the meeting.
So John's vacant, you put John or somebody else on board there?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize for interrupting, but you have to have 24 hours notice for any committee meeting to the media and the public, so they have a chance to attend because it's public business. I'm sorry, Ty, that's the law. Otherwise you'd get done in the dark.
Well, then that puts up a week to meet with the county commissioners, but maybe we still meet with them anyway. I don't think we have to have a full board for that.
No, I think we can share with them some of those same numbers too.
Yeah, so if you and I and Guy or whoever else would be interested, you can meet with me at 1:00 tomorrow with the county commissioners. Maybe we could at least give them a little push to help us in some directions.
Just to keep them apprised of where we are, I think that helps a lot.
Because I think we're going to be further away in the SEPA anyway, so I can't make tomorrow afternoon. I'm down in Vancouver the day, so and those appointments are really hard to get, so I don't want to change it, so. Well, that's understood. I think that you and I could probably do it.
We'd be happy to.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, all right, that's all I have on that. The other thing.
Can we do a meeting on Wednesday then? Would that be sufficient, 24 hours? Do you need?
Yes, it would be sufficient time. We could announce that and I think we need to make clear who's going to be on the committee because I think it's Guy, you want Guy, Mylan and Justin?
Justin, yeah, Justin.
Okay. And so we need to open it up to look at your calendars too, Mylan and?
Yeah, it'll work Wednesday, we'll work three because I'll be coming back that day. I'm leaving tonight for Seattle, but then I'll be back Wednesday morning.
What about you, Justin?
Yeah, what time are we thinking though?
Well, this coming Wednesday I have to be in Joseph Oregon. Joseph Washington, wherever that is. Joseph Oregon, is it, is it?
It is.
So I've got to drive up there and back the same day, so it'll be pretty long.
So Wednesday won't work. And then basically Thursday through about the 30th of June is when I come back. I'm out of town then.
Boy, we're having a tough time getting the dates together here.
Well, I don't know that, I think the important thing is that we.
Why don't we do this, Ty? Why don't you and Mike meet with the commissioners in their workshop session tomorrow and just advise them on what we're doing, what we're looking at, remain open for our new project. You know, we'd like to get you to work with us on this project and in some manner, you talked about maybe using their public works crew and their equipment versus money. There's a lot of different ways that they could help us out. Just keep them apprised of those options that are out there and then we can have, follow it up with the committee meeting.
Right.
And all. We'll probably have to do it first part of July. You said you'd be gone until the?
I'll be at the city council on the first of July.
Well, we could do it on that date. We could do it two weeks from today then.
Okay.
Just have a meeting, have a meeting right after the council meeting?
Or before.
Or before. Something like that.
Is that our time?
Yeah, we can try that. It might take us a couple hours around when we start at 5:00 or something.
Okay, we can do that. Works for me.
July 1st, we'll set a tentative meeting for that. I'll confirm it by email.
Well, then in the meantime, we'd be working on like getting the SEPA permit accomplished. Can you do it without having the board on to know exactly what we're going to do?
Well, that's the problem. We need to have a site plan and things like that to go along with it. We can start working on it.
Well, I know, but when we got 45 days to be for a hearing, it's kind of a shame to put it off for two months. If we get started, we better get started here. Why don't we just use the map that we've got and we can locate the sites for the stockpiles and things like that? We can go ahead and apply for the full 1,500 feet. If we can't do it, we can't do it. We'll know that when we get done talking to the county commissioners probably.
Yeah, well, you let me know how it goes tomorrow and then we'll.
Well, I want to get that into paper as soon as we possibly can, so.
Okay.
If that's good with everybody, okay. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I mentioned last time that we have that property there at the Zeratory. If you're going to trade property or give property to the state for parking, I'd like to swap your properties before you give it to the state. I was intended to bring in some charts for you tonight and I got to thinking about the airport and I forgot about it. So, but keep me in mind on that yet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the department reports. We'll start with Reggie.
Over the last two weeks, our calls for service have dramatically decreased from what they were previously.
Just a second.
Sure.
Are you guys, do you want me, you want to wait and have some more comments? We can bring this up again in public comment if you'd like to stick around for a while.
I don't think we had any more comments unless you do. I think you kind of answered our questions.
Okay, are you guys comfortable with that? You can stay for public comment if you want. Just to ask any more questions or make any more comments. Okay, all right.
I'm fine, thanks.
I guess we're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make the offer.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thanks.
So over the past two weeks, we've seen our calls for service definitely go down and we're kind of back on a normal track for the calls that are coming in. We've been recently just working on speeding, especially on Washington and Dartland Street, West Dartland. And we're going to continue to work on speed enforcement. Another area that we're working on is our crosswalk emphasis. We're going to go ahead and do a few different crosswalk emphasis. One is going to be right in front of Holcombe's Market and we're going to again try to educate people. We're going to put out a press release on crosswalk safety, what the law exactly is. There's some confusion about that and then we will again do an emphasis and make some traffic stops during that emphasis. And the last thing that we're doing is our parking enforcement. We have been, we just towed a vehicle that had parked there for a while and we've given out some more warnings. And this Wednesday, we're going to do another sweep of the entire city of Bullendale. I've scheduled about four hours with the officers to go out and really try to blanket the town and do some enforcement, do some warnings and obviously give us acknowledgement and ordinances to people. We're also working on right now, probably for the next couple of months, some ordinances that have been requested by our city prosecutor to look at. She'd like to see it maybe rewrote a little bit or reworded maybe to help her. And so I'll definitely bring some stuff to the ordinance committee as time goes on here. We're preparing for community days, the parade and the beer garden, trying to get shifts figured out for that weekend. And lastly, I have mayor is for training for the next two weeks. We're doing a legal update and case law review this week with all of the officers. And then next week, we're going to do an additional firearms training, which will be low light using flashlight with your handgun. So that'll be our training for the next two weeks and that's all I have.
Thank you, appreciate the emphasis on training too. Steve, fire department.
Fire Department, I didn't come tonight prepared really to have much of a report. No one asked me to come kind of near last minute, but I've been in the council up to date. As of today, we are up to 78 calls for service, so. And we do have guys putting lots of time in on training. Actually, tonight they've got a four-hour training going with the state patrol. It's called TINs training, Reggie might be, I don't know, traffic something.
Yeah, traffic, Washington State Patrol puts it on, how to respond to traffic accidents. That's actually our cars.
Lots of time and spent by volunteers with calls and training.
We don't have council business to conduct tonight, but we do have a resolution and Larry will present the resolution on. The city needs in place.
Okay, so some of our code enforcement actions take on a whole life of their own at times. And in this particular case, we were preparing to go to court and to get rid of abatement to go ahead and demolish the property. And it became clear to us that it was pretty close to the time when the Clicktack County Treasurer's office was going to go through a foreclosure process and put it out to auction or to bid. And so we decided maybe as a way to save money, let Clicktack County go through all of the the auction foreclosure actions that they need to go and then we would get to this point and be able to make sure that people knew there were liens on the property that needed to be paid, that there was a water bill that needed to be paid, that there's some outstanding nuisance abatement fees that had to be paid. So in an effort to make that happen, we decided to let the county do it. And so we are now at that point where we need to allow myself through resolution to be able to go to the courthouse and become a bidder so that we can be sure that that property is demolished. And if somebody outbids the city, that's fine too, just so long as they realize, which will make clear at the auction, that the building has to be torn down. It's been condemned and it has to be torn down. So either the city's going to do it or somebody else is going to do it. And I just need authorization to be able to hand treasurer a check that will cover the cost of their bill. So if you, if you look at, if you look at the resolution.
Do you have a resolution number?
Oh, you don't have it yet. We're ready to get it. Anyway, to cure the county's property tax levies, it'll be $6,500. And it's interesting to note that our nuisance abatement cost is in there. So we get that recovered by ourselves.
By ourselves.
And then the liens, liens to keep the project, the property maintained, it ended up being $2,155. That's just to do the lawn mowing and keep it maintained. And then the water bill continues to add up and it's up to $2,981.07. So we get to pay ourselves back there also. But hopefully after we demolish it, we can sell it and get some of all our.
Yeah, the county assessment says it's worth about 15 grand, just the land.
Right.
Yeah, the building's like 11 or something.
Yeah. But we're not interested in making money. We're interested in, our primary interest is the nuisance.
Yeah.
So sometimes, anyway, we knew that was going to happen, so that's how we let the county carry on its foreclosure action all the way forward.
So the demolition, are we going to allow the fire department to do training on it? No?
It's too, it's, we've tried that before and it's just too close to other buildings to make it safe. At least that's what Noah has told me. Is that correct term?
I would think that'd be correct, especially in the city limits when houses are close together. You just have too much liability for other people's house, smoke damage.
Well, those ones that were out there by the old warehouses we sold, those, those were like, they were perfect for that.
Yes, that was a little different.
Yeah.
It was an industrial area and that kind of stuff. Okay, we have the list.
697.
697. So ready to read the motion?
Yes.
I move to approve resolution number 697, authorizing the city administrator to act as a qualified bidder at the Clicktack County Treasurer's public auction set for June 19th, 2019 in the amount not to exceed $7,000.07. Second?
Been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 697, authorizing the city administrator to act as a qualified bidder at the Clicktack County Treasurer's public auction. In the city to the amount not to exceed $7,000. Is there any discussion or any questions on this process? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next item is a report of officers and city administrators. I'm beginning with Larry Bellamy tonight to change the order of what we're doing with this particular item. Larry?
Okay, just to recap on some things that are going on and some things that are working on. So there we have a few items. The major project that Public Works Crew is working on right now is crack sealing. And when, if you've seen them do the crack sealing, it takes a whole team to do that. And they are really focused on getting that project done. They worked all last week and then worked most of this week. It's important for them to stay on that project because we have to rent the crack sealing machine and then we have to buy the crack sealing and it needs to be applied in a reasonable manner. So they're working primarily on that. They are getting a little bit behind and so I authorized a couple of days of overtime so they can get caught up on some of the things that have been left because they spent all their time in crack sealing. It takes quite a few members of people to finish that project. They are finishing up on the equipment storage shed that's built there at the shop on railroad. This week, we hope to open bids for the Columbus Avenue overlay which starts at Golden Ridge Drive south to the south city limits. Couple of the things that the crew's going to be working on is base blow pump at the wastewater treatment plant pump station and then the RAS bypass at the wastewater treatment plant. Couple of things we're going to be working on in the future. Next council meeting, we hope to have the public hearing of the six-year street plan. So that's coming up, so watch your boxes for that. And then we, every year, we make application to TIV, which is Transportation Improvement Board, for grants and they are due by August 16th. So I'll be working closely with Dustin Conroy and Pioneer Surveying and Engineering to prepare the cost estimates and to look at the different projects that might be part of that application. You remember a while back, we met with Apollo and we did approve a contract with them. We met with them this last week to do an initial assessment. We looked at the city hall, fire hall, city shop and city, city police department and the operations building for our treatment plant. So we're looking at all five of those buildings to see if there's a potential energy savings project that might make sense to accomplish. Next week, three, three of us are going to the AWC annual conference in Spokane. Just wanted to mention that there seems to be, everything seems to be going well in the community days preparation. So I think we're really excited about how that's coming together and we should do the final work on that this, this week. And then of course, after July 1st, it's game on. We got 4th of July.
Right there.
And community days all coming at once. And then the other, the last thing I want to mention before one other item is that we are negotiating right now on an offer at 216 West Arlington, so hopefully we can get that one. And then as you could see earlier tonight, we have a lot of things going on at the airport. So we're working on some things at the airport, trying to, to read through the grant application stuff that was given to us by the Department of Commerce. We have to meet, meet some threshold requirements by July 22nd. So I've really got to focus on getting all those agreement issues resolved. As many of you know, well, maybe you don't know, but I have, I've received a couple of calls that the rotating beacon was out of order and it certainly is. We're trying to get it down. We have, the only way we can get it down is with the PUD boom trucks. And we're trying to get it down to see if there's a way to maintain it, but it's been patched up so many times. We decided to go ahead and order a new one and so we ordered a new one. I think we're going to order it tomorrow. I worked with our consulting engineer, Corley McFarland. He's out of precision approach engineering. He worked on the update to our airport layout plan. And he gave me all the particulars on what to order and so I asked Doug to take care of that. And so we'll order a new one. They're about three weeks out. So we'll probably have to extend the NOTAM. The NOTAM is Notice to Airman. And so it just advises the airmen, the pilots, that there's something of concern at this particular airport. So right now the rotating beacon does not work. The NOTAM was filed for that reason. Runway lights do work and they were fixed this last week.
Are you ordering new ones as with it too?
I hope so.
Okay.
With, with the?
The beacon, yeah, because the history of it being a nice target.
Oh, you mean extra ones?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I could do that.
Yeah, it might be, just have one hand just in case. Because I know buoys are always a great target for it.
Okay, so I know Ty's not here, but I didn't really get into it too much. But there is a planning process that does need to be go, that does need to go on. And the council, I just need to make sure the council's aware that it's not just the city that has to deal with this. It still is in county jurisdiction, so I need to make sure I follow their rules also, as well as rules from the state because the money comes from the state. And I don't want to get us crosswise and I know, I know they'd like us to move a little bit faster. And we will. We will. I'll do everything I can to keep things rolling as best as possible.
Are we going to talk about the fuel tanks?
Well, you want to talk about the fuel tanks?
I thought we were going to try to get at least a.
Well, I haven't heard anything from Ty on that.
Okay, well, he, I think he was waiting for a thumbs up from us to go and say, go for the earnest money agreement, yada, yada, yada.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, he didn't say anything about it to me today. So do you want?
I was just, I can bring it up. Basically, Ty's thinking he's, he's found some fuel tanks possibly for the airport and they're down at that one gas station, RV park, whatever, that's on 197. Total capacity is about, what, 22,500, something like that. Broken into three tanks, one's 12,000, the other one's two tanks totaling 12,500. Could possibly get all the tanks and equipment and everything for about 80, is what the guy was last asking. During the committee meeting, well, subcommittee meeting, we discussed, you might be able to approach the guy and say, hey, you know, what price can I get? Maybe better than 80,000, but I'm going to give you 5,000 in earnest money agreement on behalf of the city. So the, we sort of discussed it that we're going to have a city council meeting and see whether or not we get a thumbs up for having a role with this. We could use some of that funding hopefully.
Well, again, I've, I've got to get the agreement signed and in place before we can do stuff that requires reimbursement.
Okay.
I have to have the grant agreement signed first before I can ask for.
And these are above tanks, above ground tanks?
Yeah, so we'd have to build basically a pad with containment around it for, you know, to hold the capacity of at least one full tank. So it had to have a capacity of 12,500. That's usually the way EPA requires it for containment around the tanks, so. I know we used to do this for facilities on the water side, so. Of course, it doesn't count for wind or stuff like that when the tank's wrong, it'll blow up and the wind blows it out, which happens in Alaska.
And then we get the county with the low buoyed at home?
We could, yeah, you never know. Yeah, you never know.
Well, the first step we need to do is to get those tanks certified and made inside. Because we're not sure how recently they've been used and that'd be a very dangerous step. So we'll get that done. And we're about old guest.
So the process then is the grant application has to be, the paperwork has to be completed first?
Well, I think I could do concurrently the, I can concurrently do some planning work and grant agreement work all at the same time because at the moment, we're not doing anything for which we're going to ask for reimbursement. Now, if we hired a consultant, then we, then we have to realize that we'd pay them on our article if they don't get the grant agreement in place, so. But again, we're working on it as quickly as we can. And I know there's a lot of excitement about it, so I want to, I want to continue with that excitement. I don't want that to wane because this is important for our community.
So we can concurrently enter into preliminary negotiations with the tank seller? Or do we have to wait for that?
Well, with any, like you buy a home, you just have to file an earnest money agreement. And if the financing doesn't come through right, you hopefully get your earnest money agreement. If, if it's part of the contingencies built into the agreement.
Right.
So we could do about the same thing. So we could do about the same thing.
Right. Right. That's what we're talking about doing.
Right. Okay. But then we would vote on the, the terms of that agreement? Is that how that works?
I would say that would be the best way to do it. If you vote on the terms of the agreement, then you set that into escrow, then you take care of all your contingencies and close the, close the deal. We can call a special session at any time too, to act quickly if we need to.
Okay.
So we need to make sure that's obviously in our back pocket as well. We can cut down on time, we can make things move along more quickly if we want by using a special session approach as well. So, but like Mike says, you know, we, part of our agreement should be some certification that the tank is in good, good order.
Yeah.
Some inspections.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
That's definitely be a contingency.
Anything else there?
Oh, the only thing that I wanted to mention too was that along with the Department of Commerce money that we've got, we also made application, cause the timing was just right, we made application to the Department of Transportation Aviation Division for planning and environmental work to be done for the project. And we are gonna know if we were awarded that, that grant request by July 8th. So I know they, that it's, that might have to wait a little longer, but by July 8th, I might know if I've got money to hire a consultant to go ahead and take care of all the planning and environmental stuff. And that would be nice.
I think we should let everybody know about the people from State Aviation that came Friday and did the 10.
It's called a 50-10 inspection?
50-10 inspection, it's a thorough inspection of the airport.
And it had nothing to do with the grant application, but they just, they were here and.
With high hopes.
They did their visual assessment, a visual assessment of the airport to make sure their information on their data sheet was correct. Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, good, thanks Larry, very much. Let's start with Justin.
We were talking about parking before and then I remembered that we had a vacancy for the parking, like, appeal position?
Oh, yes.
And I was gonna offer to do it, sounded like I just wanted to.
Just what you wanted to do.
So.
We'll get you a little scooter.
Call it like Parking Magistrate.
Parking Wizard.
Yeah. Reggie, when are you doing those case law things? That's actually kind of interesting to me.
So we're gonna do that on Wednesday. So Wednesday I'm trying to do legal update, which I do every year. And then I'm hoping I'll have enough time to do recent case law.
Okay.
Or after it. Whatever you said, I'm gonna hold you and.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I am, I like keeping up on that stuff.
Okay, that's gonna be really good.
It's kind of it, you know, excited for the summer, it's around the corner, I guess Friday technically, so. Yeah, just stay safe everyone, don't burn anything, you're not supposed to burn and yeah, dehydrated.
Shane?
I, I'm glad to hear about the crosswalk safety stuff that the police department's going to be doing. And I wanted to clarify, are you gonna be, are you gonna be talking to pedestrians as well as drivers?
Probably more than the drivers. We will, yeah, we'll have a mock person that'll be at the intersection. They'll step out, we'll, we'll have officers at both ends. So they will be making traffic stops and giving warnings, just educating, but also people who are crossing, we'll be talking to them about not stepping out, need to be clear, and then we'll be telling the drivers when they need to actually stop for pedestrians.
Sure. Great, I think that's great, especially since it is summertime, people are walking around and the kids are out of school and, you know, kids are, I, I know that. No, they don't, and I know that I've, you know, had to kind of come to a sudden stop for people on, you know, kids on bikes and other stuff like that. So tis the season for it. Sounds good, thank you.
Thanks Shane, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought up you're gonna be doing some parking enforcement, cause that's gonna be, one of my questions, Ty, I noticed there's a lot of people, they're parking the wrong way, multiple parking on grass strips and trailers not hooked to things and just all sorts of, you know, what we worked for trying to eliminate, it's all coming back, so I'm, and it's great that you're gonna do that on Wednesday, so. But getting into the crosswalks, I noticed a lot of the crosswalks need to be repainted. This one right out here going over to the post office, I used it today and I was like going, where the heck are the lines at? You know, it's like, is there anything on the, on the board for having that done?
It's usually about this time, so I will.
Well, it's after they do the crack sealing usually.
Yeah, I thought it was about this time.
And they're not, not using my crack sealing like they did on buyers writing names on the road, right? Eddie is still visible on buyers, by the way, so. What's the status on Songo? Have we heard anything?
I haven't heard anything.
Okay. Osgree?
Haven't heard from him either.
Cause I guess he's still in that building over there at CNC Auto and they're, they're looking at trying to expand and they can't do it while he's there, so. And he's not talking to.
The, the agreements between he and.
Well, he's not communicating with, by understanding with the landlord, so the landlords have problems getting ahold of him, so.
Okay.
I don't know if you could maybe give a little wedge in there or nudge or.
We certainly can try.
Okay. Yeah, cause I know Craig wants to expand and he has that four-post lift, he wants to put up in that space and he can't do it until they're out.
Yeah, all right, I will, I'll make mention of that.
Is that contract like ready for him or did we still have some modifications we needed to make before he?
It's pretty much ready for him. We just need to coordinate a call and try to get ahold of him, get him in here to, to take a look at it and review it and okay it.
Okay. You can email him too.
That's true, we can, I'll, I'll make a note on that and then we get on that this week.
Yeah, and I'll be looking to see if I can catch him tomorrow morning, because.
Okay.
I've a number of times gotten in touch with him, just by getting over there.
Tell him to call his landlord.
Yeah, that's a good situation.
Yeah. Got Osgree, well, you know, I know we talked about, well, what's the final on Carl's position? The Public Works position? I know there was some discussion about moving people up and splitting duties and.
More about that later.
Okay. So, I mean, it's just all this stuff that comes down, you know, crack sealing, filling potholes on certain streets, they're still unfilled. You know, painting sight, crosswalks and stuff like that, it seems like it's all sort of hanging out there, you know, and if Carl was here, we could go, Carl, what the heck? What's going on?
Well, even, even with Carl here, you'd still have issues with manpower, so.
Yeah.
That's really what it starts to come down to, is what's the priority and so, you know, this year we got started a couple of weeks late with all the spring stuff, spring, summer things because the winter lasted so long.
Yeah.
So that's part of our, again, the reason why I say let's, let's get a couple of extra days in your overtime work and try to catch up. So again, it's, it's more crew manpower related than anything. I don't think it's because they don't wanna do it or can't do it, but, or have time to do it, they need more manpower.
Well, last but not least, I'd like to thank the chief and his crew for allowing me to come out and qualify again. I actually got to shoot right alongside the chief and he outshot me, so that's, that's okay, I qualified though. It's all that important thing. And then I actually got to go out and shoot on the rifle course and, and it was great. It was, we had a good time and, and then some of the crew got to experience a large caliber rifle and shooting it too, so. We had a good time out there and wasn't too wet. And that's it. Thank you, chief. And pass my thanks down to the crews.
I love it.
Shane? Well, I don't have much, but it's probably depressing airport because working for the county, I can tell you this is the busy time of the year, of the year. So seeing the truck probably till September is probably gonna be a no. With regard to what they were talking about.
Well, they gotta go through the whole secret process anyway and that takes a couple ones, so. Same in September.
That'd be just all right.
Yeah.
Thanks for the warning, though. Andy?
I'm good.
Miley?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to comment on, I, several times, in the last several months, I've talked about the, people getting, uh, scanned phone calls from the, supposedly they say they're from the social security. And they're, what they're doing, they're harassing people, really what it is. And I know Chief Reggie and I, we briefly talked about it a few times and I've contacted both the Senator's Office and also the Congress Butler's Office and so last week, I received a letter from Congresswoman's Office and, and they, first they know this is a national problem and that's what Chief Reggie has mentioned and also is in the Goldendale Sentinel, but then at the, she mentioned, or the letter mentioned that, you know, that they're illegally doing the rulebook calls, what they call it. And so, so Congress, they know about it. And I think, but I feel that we've sent a good message to our Washington State delegation that, you know, that we're kind of being harassed, the people of Goldendale, and hopefully Congress will come up with a, resolve the problem. They're looking at it, just how long it's gonna take, I don't know, but I just feel that we, we kinda, we gave a message. Also, just wanna say that I look forward to being on the airport board and I think I, I think I'll enjoy, enjoy that. Also, when you mentioned crosswalks, there's also, the yellow strips are fading away too. And so could that be done same time we do crosswalks or?
Yes. The yellow is usually done by an outside contractor.
Okay. Could that be done when you do the extension of Columbus, Columbus Street? Or that has to be added on?
You mean the overlay on Columbus?
Yes.
Okay, that, the stripping will take place after they're done.
Yeah, right.
But that, that'll be done later. The, the stripping for the rest of the time should be done like in, I think that's done in June or July.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. Anyway, I just, fill that out. Anyway, that's all I have here.
Hope they don't put some hole in the, in brass. Thank you. Under Mayor's comments, we've managed to make some changes in the agenda, in particular to make a, put in a reminder on public comments. So there's a three-minute limit. Anyone that has more time than that, wants to take more time like we had in the last meeting, they'll be required to take, to request a presentation at the next meeting. We're not gonna have the meeting take, take it over in that way and time abuse, so we've got that in place. I also changed the order for the officers, the city administrator and the mayor on our reports. I think it will give us a much more meaningful discussion. We had a great discussion tonight. And I think that will help that rather than the discussion before Larry gives his report.
Well, it answered several of my questions I already had, so it's great.
Well, that's the way to do it.
Yeah.
Those are the things that I wanted to raise, it's just draw people's attention to that, to that aspect. There is an ordinance on city council meetings and right now the three-minute limit is a thing we're looking at. There are other things that we may have to put in later, but this is the most, the help, most helpful for our business-like meeting that flows smoothly. So I think we'll be all right on that. The next item is public comment. You have three minutes. Give your home issue. I'm talking to Terry.
I'll be quiet.
Okay, thanks Terry. There's no other comments that we need to open our executive session, to close this meeting and go to executive session. We have a motion to do that.
So move for how long?
One hour.
One hour.
It's a big discussion.
Yeah. So move to go on executive session for one hour.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to enter into executive session for one hour. All in favor?
Aye. And take a short program for one hour.
Oh, yeah.